Time being, seven o'clock, the Mechanicsburg Borough Council meeting, regular session will come to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Roll call, please.
President Miller.
Here.
President Anthony.
Here.
Councilwoman Agarjun.
Here.
Councilwoman Booker.
Here.
Councilwoman Gary.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Neal.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Lieutenant Capsey.
Present.
And Peter Galkin.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Kent.
Here.
And Tua.
Here.
Secretary Henry Ture.
Yeah.
Community coordination coordinator.
Here.
Primary program coordinator, Arnold.
Yeah.
Project Director.
Here.
Three before.
Thank you. Before approving the agenda, we have a quick announcement that there will be an executive session on a matter of personnel immediately following the council meeting tonight. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any items to add or remove from the consent agenda or regular agenda? I have one. And that will be discussion and action to approve the conditional use application for hot fog print media, print and media ink for light manufacturing at ten North Frederick Street in the Old Town District. Are there any other additions to the regular agenda or consent agenda? Saying none, are there any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Saying none, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
So there.
Councilman Burek moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Agarjun seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Moving on to citizens' comment, is there anyone here for citizens' comment this evening? Yes ma'am. Please approach the.
Hi, my name is Will, I live in the corner of Media Street.
Yes.
And I am here with some of my neighbors, um, to highlight the serious rodent, um, mouse infestation at the whole neighborhood. Particularly at the four hundred block and one up, that's all the way up to the guard street. Um, it has gone on for years actually, we're just double checking when in fact the people living next door. Ownership of the house, and that was in twenty fifteen, so we haven't, we haven't jumped to hurried conclusions. And it's a new situation, uh, was at the very beginning, we welcomed the people with open arms who had kids. And I was a teacher, and they, I have children's libraries, and I was giving books to them, they were homeschoolers, and all things were going on, but lots of things have degraded over the years, let's put it that way, and it's just gotten worse and worse, and when they got the animals and chickens, it's gotten even worse. Anyway, I have lived for over four fifty years in the house I'm living in now, it's on the corner of Keller and Washington Street. And I've lived in that same house that long, lived in Char- in Charvance County a few years before, before that, um, city in the local area. And when I was living in that house all that time, we did not have mice, we didn't have mice, it's an old house, but we didn't have mice. Um, you know, I don't, maybe there was a mouse trapped without, that I don't even remember, but we never had to call in anybody to deal with, with the mice. Um, my neighbor Anna was here before, and she has detailed in writing and spoken to the council reading about the conditions of the property between my property and her property, and that's number four of four. Um, her description was very accurate, if restrained, I should say, um, and I'm not going to go over that so much again. But, um, I, I would like to say that you probably should have seen some pictures, because they were pictures that she sent to people. And at one point, a ghost person came out to, to set the situation and took pictures of the property, and I don't know if you've seen this yet or not, but there's some out there which is better than words. Anyway, her description was accurate, so I'm going to talk a little bit more about what went on in my house during those years. And for most of the fifty years that I've lived there, I was, the neighbors were the Wilbers, and then we know the Wilbers, way back to grandfather, who had those repair shops for, on Main Street. But this was mostly, um, with the boys growing up there with my kids, this would have been, um, Rob and Steve and Jeff Wilber, and some of you know who they, who they are. And Rob Wilber has a wildlife and pest solution business at his home, and he's been to my house numerous times over the last number of years. He finally allowed that he ought to tell me that probably what he sees at my house is the worst mouse infestation he has ever seen in all the places he goes to. And he goes everywhere, including over in Harrisburg, so that's not, that's not where you want to be, and that's what he tells me that. So, um, he apologizes, I have to say, he apologizes every time he walks in my back door, he's got me up to do, because he sold that property for four to the current residence in twenty fifteen. And he said, well, it was possible, and I said, what do you want? It's possible, he didn't know, he didn't know. Um, and apparently, the people who sold it to are the parents of the woman of the couple that lives there. It's not the couple that lives there, and this is what the woman on the street was, and that's apparently who he settled with. And they have a house right up the street, and their house is a used tin, so that's a, a thing going on there too, I mean. But anyway, that's the situation there. So, he's told me, as long as the animals, the rabbits and the chickens are over there, and the tins and things are not taken care of, and everything is dirty, and there's not good animal husbandry, he said, we will have mice in the neighborhood. And it won't just be my house, so it'll be spread and barred as a tent, because that's just the way, the way it is. So, um, the property as it is now is in the health list, and it violates several codes, and I've looked up to, to double check it. So, um, one other person who's in the neighborhood a little further away is living in the Hilton, some of you know that name, because she's been there a very long, a long time. Um, she's on the corner of Stinson and Rod Street, and she has an older house like I do, and her problem with the mice is almost as bad as mine. Um, and she has grandchildren from all ages, because she had a very large family, and some of them just had kids now that are very young. And it drives her crazy, because the kids have to come to her house, sometimes she babysits, and sometimes they have parties. And, you know, like under the carpets, and when they're covered, and everything is mouth filled, and there's mi- mice that she sees. And when Rob comes in, because the infestation is so bad, so he's using pretty strong stuff, and you can't, you can't have kids and animals be near it. I don't have any kids or animals at home right now, um, so he puts the base out, it's just as it is. Uh, otherwise, he said, he'd never be able to get rid of what I've got. Um, and we're not talking about, again, we're not talking about gun and mice, we're not even talking about a hundred mice. He could send hundreds and hundreds of them, he said, I probably had over a thousand of them over the time that he's been taking care of my. And that is sickening, you know, and what to deal with. When your kids come home from Thanksgiving and Christmas high, and they have one a good meal, and you can't leave anything out anywhere, you can't have snacks coming out, you can't have a plate that you had in the oven that you want to put out somewhere that it cools off, and the turkey goes in, I mean, it's just as nasty, and they, you know, bug them and say, well, why don't you move where we are? And I said, why don't we move? I want to stay here, but I really don't like these problems.
So, thank you, thank you for your comments. Uh, I just want to point out that our codes and zoning officers here tonight, so he's, he's listening to what you, what you have to say. And I just want to, um, state that we have a three-minute, uh, time limit in the, in this section of public comment. And then we can continue at the end of the meeting for another three minutes if you would like that opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other citizens' comment? Mr. Baker. Try not to.
I just wanted to come about the people from Virgell. And you know, the, the stuff we're doing, and that, it's a good head of the program. And these guys, the dirt birds, and the damn, they made sure that we'd be fixed. They can hit it hard, they're driving, and they're good at it, and they're missing. And said, they sort of allowed them to hopefully fix us things correctly this time, and they think that they've got it all in their bag.
That's good to hear.
That's the problem, it's a, you know. You know, I couldn't, I couldn't handle that, I said, no. You know, we put the box in for the, uh, the manhole, it appears like they put the manhole below it. They set it up to the level of the street, and everyone knows here, the level of the street as it is today is the level of the base coat, not the level of, of the rubber coaster. So that's gonna be hopefully not another pothole or something in the manhole that we have on treadmill. And if you look at the sewer manholes, you know, six, seven yards away, it's at the proper level to account for the upper portion of the building. And if I want to, please, is it possible that for fifty years, the fuck you get the top coat? And one of those is that it has not had the top coat, no, it's, it's true. And maybe now after it's repaired, and this property and this thing goes, it's maybe we can get something in. But, you know, it's been a year that I've done these days, that wasn't helping, so, uh, this is a good thing.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate it, thank you, thank you. Any other citizens' comment? Yes, sir.
The rundown house, and I got them right down the alley, and the other house was one down, nobody's been in that for about eight years, and I think the boat firehouse is right now going on. And the lake problem could be a firehouse too, and the storm, the fire has got to be up, and that's good money. The oldest one's been big one. I saw seven of them two years ago. And I called down here twice, and he told me it's my, he's on the phone, he's saying, well, let's get rid of it. I was very disgusted, angry, upset, that it's not my problem, because my group in there, nineteen seventy-five, I did not have any of this. We got three people on that alley that have rabbits and kittens. We got two houses that are still abandoned. And, uh, I'm really upset, I like to know the solution to this problem. You know, and I got another problem down at the end of the team alley, which I called down twice, and I stole about eighty-four, with the telephone pole sticking out, dog, you think, that the guard's trucks are inflexible, or trucks can't get around, and then there's people that park their pickup trucks on the corner, and you want to know how many times I've lost that hit? I can bring other people down there, as little as that kid, he tells, it's dangerous, very dangerous. And faceless, full kids going to school in progress. Now, so I painted myself, I talked to the maintenance guy, and he told me to talk to the, uh, guy with the water. Maintenance guys were there, they cursed, and they told me, they didn't have no paperwork on page nine, so. I can deal with it for two years. And I was really upset about this problem. I got twins, I got, you know, my daughter has twins, two-year-old that we watch, we care. I don't need it, I pay my tax, I work with these people, but why do I always shut down? I can never understand. I don't think it's my responsibility. You know, I don't think it's my daughter's fault, wants to, they all that money to do, car, wire, space, for mine. Now they're there for that call. Do you expect the car to be, that might destroy it? Why am I always shut down? Why don't anybody ever want to work?
Sir, thank you for your comments tonight, we are going to work with you, we're gonna work with your neighbors to solve this problem, so that.
I'm not, I hate to get upset.
No, we understand, I mean, we're, we're here to.
And specifically, the yellow house is four twenty-one?
No, four twenty-one, five, four, probably not, it's like.
It's the yellow, it's next, it's next to four twenty-three, so it might be.
Four twenty-three.
It should be four twenty-one, and then where's, where's the other yellow house? Or there's another abandoned house, you said? Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about, it's the little white one. That four twenty-one will not be sitting there for two years, that it's in probate right now, but, um, we'll address that, I'll have Lane address that directly with you. So, are you seeing, and I know I'm not supposed to address, but are they rats versus mice? I'm sure. Because there's no more cats. She, she was the neighborhood cat lady, so. Please do not buy cats in the basement, please, that'll start another problem, people yell at me. Sorry, I didn't mean to plant that idea.
Thank you, any other citizens' comment?
No, no, no.
That's why we don't address.
Worst idea I've ever had.
Um, Summer's conference meeting, my name is Rachel Lawrence, I live at Central Street, and we will be, we will, um, on July twenty-first, I sent an email to the borough manager to get some questions that were pertaining to the MDFC board, to build the project, and I wanted to. Uh, he replied very quickly, and said, he can't read email, whether there are demonstrations like the times, that would be the cause. And, um, I was going to testify on this question, but I'm not. Uh, in the meantime, I've since I've been talking to several of my neighbors, and I realize that there is very minimal communication, too public, and a lot in this project. The Apple campaign tab on the MDFC website, the Littleville Magazine, Hope for the Rest of the Basin. Uh, Fire Chief Support, the Fire Department website are all within the court, and the MDFC's social media pages, they were highlighted, uh, trending, and responding. It's great, and it's something, well, it's a, it's a job. Um, several of my neighbors were unable to relocate their newspaper, the notes are here, it's been done in the end of seventeen thirty-eight. Um, I've heard ranges for this project across anywhere from Royal Fireland up to two million dollars. As a comparison, and point of scheme, the country called up to the fire department, they gave a sixty-point eight million dollar renovation of the project, the project. Thanks for having me here, my pleasure. Um, the last of the MDFC emergency service building project information, combined with the continuing rise in cost, still, of me, what's concerned that the project has exceeded the needs and finance capabilities of the borough, and sets the total risk of not being able to fund easily, that's the issue. Um, but Borough Council independently critically devaluing the struggle of work, service, and building projects, again, to ensure that the government can use public power. Now, also, within the last few months, there's been some more renovations, with a new, uh, three officers, and a fire five unit, there's a lot. Um, while these four members are servicing the borough, while the society is keeping me, the concern is invasion positions will compromise integrity and respect of our citizens. There are physical and environmental issues. Uh, I'm also concerned that the change that you put in, in fact, their money's already, so this is a spending. And a lot of things do not necessarily reflect well on the way the justice department, I hope it's breaking out, meaning for others to step forward and get connected with the department, if you want, if you want, if you want, if you want, part of it. I'm opposing, I would take out payment bank help for this, for this effort, you know, many of the neighbors, they're, 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 they're not all recognized, and I appreciate their efforts on specific contributions towards, uh, the middle of the park, uh, picking up private schools, while the sixteen agents, the social media outlets, it's going to be a platform, and then David, nineteen, we're getting, we're dropping a lot, we're looking to go back, we're looking to get a lot, and, but, on that, everything's coming up.
Thank you.
Are you aware that the next meeting, you have the date and time?
Yes.
Any other citizens' comment? Seeing none, moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Vice President Anthony moves, and Councilwoman Agarjun seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Regular agenda, finance administration ordinance, Vice President Anthony. Municipal community outreach, Councilman O'Neil.
No updates tonight.
Community and economic development, Councilman Burek, I'll read the, the motion. Discussion and action to approve conditional use application for hot fog print media ink for light manufacturing at ten North Frederick Street in the Old Town District. Your motion. Vice President Anthony moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Booger seconds, any discussion?
Nice to see a business expanding within the borough, especially if it's a good business, uh, who's, uh, been good corporate citizen.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
So, Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, this would be a, an approval of the conditional use, um, application, subject to the conditions that are set forth in, uh, it's either section seven fourteen or seven thirty-eight of the zoning ordinance. And it's, it's, it's a one or the other decision on the part of council. So, seven thirty-eight is a light manufacturing, um, provisions? Is that the recommendation from the planning commission?
There was no recommendation from. I believe it was, uh, Angela Rogowski's, he had some recommended conditions during the hearing. During the hearing, uh, the applicant answered favorably, favorably to all those conditions.
So, but it would be necessary for council to make the determination as part of this approval, um, as to under which conditions the conditional approval application is being approved? Would, would you be kind enough, please, to give us a brief explanation of the two options available for us? Yes, yeah, if you do that, if you just bear with me, I can pull that up. Mr. President, point of word, do we have a?
No. We do. For, motion to approve.
Like it. Okay, so, uh, the applicant filed the conditional use application, um, citing to two sections of the zoning ordinance under conditional uses in the alternative, meaning that council can not approve it, either, either one of these, uh, conditional use, um, permits, and section seven fourteen, let me start with seven, section seven thirty-eight, um, which is light industrial. So, under section seven thirty-eight, uh, zoning districts where, where light manufacturing is designated as a conditional use, the use shall be permitted upon the approval of Borough Council, subject to the following requirements. Buffering of parking and loading areas shall be provided in accordance with this chapter. Objectionable noise, vibration, smoke, dust, electrical disturbance, odors, heat, or glare shall not be produced. As part of the land development or, um, conversion of an existing building, the landowner and or developer shall provide a plan for, uh, photometrics of the lot. All materials and equipment shall be stored within a completely enclosed building. The use shall be, shall comply with all performance standards specified in this chapter. Hours of operation and activities must be appropriately scheduled to protect the operation of the surrounding neighborhood from detrimental noise, dust, odor, vibration, light, or other disturbances or, uh, interruption. Finally, an inventory of toxic, corrosive, flammable, uh, carcinogenic, or explosive materials, chemical, liquids, gases, or solids stored and or used on site shall be available upon request. So that would be, the, those, those conditions would apply to approval of this application under section seven thirty-eight.
And I believe on the application, that is what they put on there, correct?
They, they asked for either under seven fourteen or seven thirty-eight.
On the light manufacturing, something, correct, okay.
So, that'd be my recommendation for council to approve under section seven thirty-eight.
So we have a motion and a second for approval of the conditional use application for hot fog print and the ink for light manufacturing under chapter twenty-seven, section seven thirty-eight for light manufacturing at ten North Frederick Street in the Old Town District. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Discussion and action to approve the gift of fifty dollars to Mechanicsburg near Zee, rent drop, for a paid rental to support a fundraiser event on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
There, second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
So essentially, they're asking for fifty dollars, but then they just pay back to us for the, for the, you know.
Correct, that is, fifty dollars is the amount of a nonprofit rental for both sides of the large, the.
So I have a thought or two, I saw Mr. Westby enter the, the chamber, thanks for being here, and thank you for what you do for the, for the rent drop. I like to support personally, and through my business of the rent drop for many years, and feel that it's a great downtown activity. I do have some hesitation with this particular, uh, gift, because I think if we set a precedent that nonprofits who are already paying a deeply subsidized rate for the use of the facilities, who've already accounted for taking care of nonprofits, uh, through the pricing. I, I feel that we're going down a slippery slope, and, uh, what's gonna stop every nonprofit that comes to us for asking us to, to grant them an additional, additional gift on top of our, you know. We do have staff time, which translates into dollars, we are spending taxpayers' money. Uh, we do have upkeep of the pavilions, uh, every use of the pavilion does take a toll on the pavilion, and we have to maintain those. I don't think fifty dollars is a big ask for a nonprofit, and so I would just offer that for consideration.
What is the rate for the pavilion when it's not a nonprofit?
And there are, but, uh, there have been other nonprofits that have used the pavilion that have paid for nonprofits.
And I think Chief Wyrmes, maybe you could tell me, do we also give some consideration? And I think Chief Wyrmansman, you could tell me, do we also give some consideration for parking or drive-through conductors that go about every... I remember in years past, the organization asking us these questions, applying for vehicle access.
We usually put up the, the parking signs on the, on one side of the, the other side of the road, basically.
Do we charge for that? We do not. So we're, we're, we're giving additional value, I think, for our New Year's, the Rentschfah organization. Which we should, I think, do. Glad to do that.
Personally, I agree with Councilman Yuric's, um, position that it is a slippery slope of which nonprofits do we support by giving a free rental or a gift versus those that have to pay the, the nonprofit rate? I mean, we're going to be honest about it, we may not still charge a nonprofit rate if we're just going to give gifts. So that's, that's my thought about it.
How many nonprofits rent a pavilion a year?
Sorry, so ten to twenty? I'm not sure. I guess another consideration too, and it, it's, uh, it feels awkward because I'm such a supporter of the organization. I mean, I give them, I give the organization far more than that, just bottled water. But, uh, there are other places that will allow chicken barbecues to be done at no cost. There are businesses in the community that can do that. Famous, we know Palmer's has done that for many, many, many chicken barbecues with the fire department. Uh, so, it's not the only alternative. If fifty dollars were critical, and I would certainly welcome anyone coming to visit me at fifty dollars, just wanna bankrupt the event. Be happy to. I probably don't have that in cash there, but I can give you a credit card.
I would want, I would want to continue having people come to the park, so I feel the same way. Fifty dollars is that impediment to an event I'd like to be known, to be known to, but... And I think that if we have a policy of, because we do give, either we waive it for all nonprofits or charge it.
Brief, also, um, energy to maintain the pavilion and the parking. Any other discussion?
Just that I think it's important to be clear that we're talking about the theory of this, not the specific...
Not the specific. And it sounds like we don't, is, is there any memory of us in recent memory offering this, uh, no cost to any nonprofit? Cause this happened before.
Start shaking her head no.
So there's no precedent established, other than we haven't done it. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Public works in the safety.
Uh, so the only, um, item we have for this evening is discussion and action to approve the ordering of Motorola T twenty-five radios in the amount of, uh, four hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, to be detailed later in September twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Agarjun makes the motion. Councilman O'Neil, seconds, and, uh, sounds like we don't really have a lot of choice, I guess. It is, uh, it's a hefty sum, but mandatory.
Yeah, I, um, did meet with the county commissioner to discuss the plight, uh, that has been put upon many municipalities and townships. Um, to see if there was any additional dollars that the county could give, and the answer was no. Um, the infrastructure that they had to take out a bond to be able to build the new towers to make sure that the phones would operate efficiently. As I know many of you are familiar with, um, the, the mobile networks and things going up and being upgraded. So there is no additional dollars that the county can get, and what they said to me is that this arbor money that they're giving us to supplement was a gift. And, um, you know, they're happy to give it to us, but to really consider the importance of upgrading these radios, because there are dead spaces in rescue right now. So it was not the news I know that we were hoping to get, but I think it's the absolute, I don't think we have a choice. We have a choice between carriers, but not between purchasing these radios.
Any other discussion?
I mean, we are getting, what, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which I think is important for the community to know, but we don't have a choice. Being forced, we did get some money, we have tried to fight the money, we had a lot of conversations last meeting about this.
And it's something that they've been talking about for a long time, so what they started doing is in different counties across Pennsylvania started first, and we just are now in that bracket to be able to up. And I think to support our first responders and making sure that we have it, I mean, it's important to be able to do.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Coffee Parks and Recreation.
I don't have any updates tonight. Laura, I, I have a question. Um, is there availability to talk about cultural sensitivity with swimwear at the pool? Yes, of course. Perfect. Um, I think that there has been brought to my attention that there has been some talk about what is appropriate and not appropriate to wear at the swimming pool. So I think maybe if we just, uh, maybe reach out to, um, the Muslim, the Islam cultural center, and maybe a Hasidic cultural center to talk about their swimwear versus what we see, you know, maybe in our communities more often. Had been brought to my attention. But I also wanted to give kudos, um, that people are really excited about that snack bar and the choices, the kids especially. Oh, great. And the feedback has been really good through the pool season. Awesome. Giant breezes, yeah, and pizza.
Big kids do.
So I'm, I'm hoping that they are also having the same feeling, the snack bar to return next year. But I did notice, um, just, as Mr. Baker said, you can't get all compliment. Um, the, the, the pavilions are really looking rough, like there's a lot of rot on them, so maybe if your next meeting, you could probably point them in that direction, um, in the Memorial Park area. The whole entire park or just the full? Uh, the, the whole entire park, okay, yeah. But other than that, great job.
I, I do, I do the same for the Rentschfah.
Uh, yeah, yeah, we, we really need that.
See a theme here.
We need that, but you know, that's...
That came around fast.
Yeah.
Personnel committee, Councilwoman Agarjun.
Uh, we're gonna have an executive session afterwards, nothing else to report.
Any other citizens comment? Other business?
Any other business?
No, no, no.
No, please, I have a list of things. Sorry. So, um, just big kudos to the ranch shop for the chili cook-off. It's always nice to see all the people, there was North Carolina and all kinds of people that came up to it. Um, and it was pretty good, even though I didn't eat all twenty samples of it, um, I enjoyed that, that day. Um, also, this Friday, we're gonna have Unlikely Duo on the green space, so please come out. I think there's two or three more concerts coming out. And as you saw this last Friday, we did cancel because of thunder and lightning, and making sure that the bands take care of their instruments. Then of course, make sure you get out to Community Day on the fifth, there'll be lots of great vendors. Opening ceremony's at ten AM, so please join us for that. Sadler Health, um, which you guys know, I talk about a lot, is planning on opening in October. They're gonna have a community health fair on the ninth at Memorial Park, so they'll be offering screenings and other, um, great events for the community, so please join them too, and I think that's four to seven on the ninth. And just to address, um, Cumberland Housing Initiative is looking at lighted properties. I'm a member of that, um, it's Cumberland Perry Housing Initiative. So there are properties that we are looking at within the borough to see if we can help, um, be able to address those situations. It's not an instant issue, but if there are properties, if you can email me the addresses, I'll put them on the list of people that we address. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Keep enjoying the pool. Um, just one comment on the way here somewhere today. I noticed that the G-Man has those flowers out in here. Oh my gosh, they're gorgeous. We haven't seen them drive past. I don't know how they grow them that tall, but they're, they're absolutely stunning.
Sweet potatoes.
Sweet potato bomb.
Seriously?
Yeah.
That's amazing. So I'm glad that they went, came back out again. I mean, too bad it's not open, but it's nice to see the, it's nice to see the flowers there. That into one and nothing.
So, uh, two things. Thanks for supporting the radiator project, and it is what it is. I looked at an earlier file where it was almost, uh, forty percent less, uh, in April of last year, twenty twenty-two. So that's the ever-going cost increases that we're subject to. Uh, the other two thing is, whenever, uh, we presented the word to council back maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, that we were really gonna get aggressive and try to search out any sort of alternative funding and through grants. So we've been successful. The federal, uh, government notified us about a week and a half ago, and, uh, we have a grant for a partial, uh, replacement for our S C P A, our self-contained breeding apparatus, in the amount of two hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six, to be exact. So, um, all great, we'll be, uh, approaching council within time, uh, as far as the drawdown into next year, maybe some of the capital monies to satisfy the rest of the stuff.
What is the balance? You said it was two hundred and four, again, grand, but...
Yes.
What's the total project?
So I can't give you that, and I'll tell you why I can't, because we brought in a co, a little bit of competition. Right now, we're using one brand, we brought in another brand also, so some of the costs might vary a good bit, so... I don't have that with me. The initial grant was for...
You just, you just quoted us a number down to the cent.
Yeah, I did. That was what the feds allowed us.
I think you probably have a pretty good idea what...
I do, so the original grant was for four hundred and four thousand.
Thank you.
So. And that's for one unit and one square square.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, so.
Good work.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks from my end too on supporting the radio project that we have mentioned. Um, I have a few anniversaries. Um, Officer Kyle Chester, six years. Crossing Guard, St. Patrick's nine. Joyce Phillips sixteen. Gail McKnight, seven. Lawrence Frye, twenty-six. For those of you that are adding it up in your head, that is fifty-eight years of service for these guys, and the remainder of them have, um, anniversaries in other months, is another thirty years. So our crossing guards are extremely reliable for us. They tend to stick around.